I have six thirty. I think all my devices, so I will call to order the March twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-two Wenham Select Board Meeting. As has been the case for a couple of years, this meeting is virtual via Zoom. It is being recorded and all of our votes will be taken by roll call. And we will have a roll call attendance, starting with Diane.
Diane Buko here.
Gary Cheeseman here.
Catherine Harrison here. So the select board is here. Thank you for everyone else who is on the, on the call. But we're, we've changed up the order of this agenda a little bit from our usual agenda, and that is because we have a very, very important topic to discuss and hopefully make a decision. Make a decision on this evening. As I think everyone knows, we've been in the process for eight, nine weeks of searching for a permanent town administrator. And we received the names from Tom Younger of three finalists that we have, who, who we have interviewed in the last week. And have received input on. And we are here tonight, therefore, to deliberate and provide a conditional appointment, conditional based on you. So the standard things for, for one of these finalists. There are several ways we can do this. I'm going to suggest a way, and if Diane and Gary are okay with it, it seems as if it might be since some of these finalists have put a lot of time and effort into their applications and interviews, perhaps we should each take a moment and discuss or discuss or speak about each candidate, just a little bit about each one. And then when all three of us are done, we can perhaps, it might be obvious, or we may have to to do some kind of ranking. And do you have your hand up?
No, I don't know why my hand is up.
Oh, okay.
My hand is not up.
Gosh, I finally see one and it's not even real. Usually I miss them. So does that sound okay? Each of us take a few minutes to talk about each of the candidates and then we'll, we'll see where we are after that.
I think so, yes.
Okay. I'll ask as always, who, who would like to begin?
Very well, I'll begin, unless Diane wants to.
My, my screen keeps telling me I'm about to raise my hand, so I'm getting concerned. So I'm sorry, but I'll let Gary go first.
Right.
Thank you.
So I think first, I'd like to say thank you to all the employees, department heads that had the other interviews and all the citizens. Certainly, we've, I've received many emails today. Hopefully I reply to everyone if I've missed some one, it's just oversight on the numbers coming in. So thanks for the great response and inputs on this selection process. Also, thank you to the three candidates. I thought all had very impressive resumes. I think they all interviewed well and had answered the questions straightforward as well. Do we want to go beyond that, Catherine, or onto individuals?
Yeah, I think so.
So. Someone that would fit in well with Wenham, and amongst that is knowing that in the past we've had financial concerns, that we've had personnel concerns, and we've had a turnover. So I was looking for someone and I think it was Steve, was very strong in finances and but also was very conversant with other municipal areas as well, and heard that back from department heads. I was most impressed that he was a problem solver and was completely committed to completing a task, even when we asked that question about what was the toughest thing you've run into in your career? I thought that he saw Wenham as a preferred destination, and I think he laid out a very good detailed team building plan. I would say Tanya comes with a most impressive resume, but I think that a lot of it was in not actual hands-on municipal work. I'll pass it on to Diane at this point.
So I would have to agree. I was looking for someone with a good basis of municipal knowledge. Not necessarily needed to have experience as a TA, but have a lot of different variety of experiences within a municipality. I felt Tanya's experience was very varied, very interesting. Her energy level was exuberant and enthusiastic, and that was great, but I, to be honest, I didn't feel as if the commitment to one community was really what, what really pleased her a lot, and I felt that it might not be the best fit kind of for her. Fred brought a lot of experience, a variety of TA experience in many different places. But I just wasn't sure that Wenham was his preferred destination. As I didn't feel Wenham was for Tanya either, so I felt Steve's demeanor, the way he builds relationships, the way he hires people, the way he really wants to work in a small community, close to his home, have that work-life balance. It seemed like all good positives. That was a very roundabout way of saying a lot of stuff. Sorry.
That's okay. I, I, I could just, you know, sort of say, I agree with Gary, as you know, as we like to say sometimes. But in this case, I'll make a few comments. I, I, I want to also thank all of our candidates for coming in. They're finalists and for their, their commitment to doing a good job with the interview. They all were good qualified candidates. And as we learned, it's not easy to find those people right now. So thank you to all of them. I think that of the three, Fred Vantresco, who I was happy to speak to, had a lot of direct municipal experience, but not much of it was in Massachusetts, which made it possibly a challenge for him to work in a, in a state that, as he admitted, has a lot of rules and regulations and laws that are specific to Massachusetts. And he seemed to have many municipal positions that lasted only two or three years, so longevity was a little bit of a concern. I liked Tanya, I liked them all, but Tanya, as people have said, was very energetic and enthusiastic, and that was very refreshing to, to see. She was very professional and certainly well-educated. She seemed to be willing to take on any challenge that, you know, she was faced with, and certainly there would be some here, as there would be anywhere. I, she did not seem to have, or I couldn't really tell from the interview and her resume, but she did not seem to have direct experience with some of the issues or many of the issues that a TA would have to have experience in. She, she had a lot of opportunities as an assistant town administrator to see things, but not necessarily to be involved and to make decisions and to manage people. So that leads me to Steve Paulus, who again, I was looking for a strong collaborative leader who could, you know, not only get the jobs done, but do them in a way that created a very strong, satisfied, happy team of people that he was working, that this person, the TA, would work with. And Steve said a few things that made me comfortable with that. He, his answers were the most specific and relevant, I thought. He does have a, he has good communication skills. He, he seemed to have a good sense of what a TA job is, although he is not a TA. So, but he's, he seemed to understand what that job entails. He talked a lot about integrity. That was something I was very much looking for in many aspects of what he does, including hiring and character as being important in someone who he hires. And I think someone else said this, and I should, I'll start here to say that a lot of things, sentiments that I'm speaking or about right now, I, I will say were echoed in quite a few of the pieces of input, and we did get a lot of input. So I, I feel that made me feel comfortable that what I was seeing, it seemed as if other people were seeing as well. He really seemed to want to be in Wenham. He certainly wants to be a TA, but it, it came across that he wanted to be a TA in Wenham. Whether that's because of the proximity to where he lives or his knowledge of the town, he, he knows some people here, but he did, he did seem to think that. He, he talked and understood something that's important to me, that municipal government is really a service organization and that we have, you know, public service is really our job. He had some particular experience I thought would be helpful, obviously finance, IT, HR. And again, I think, so what I started off with, I thought of, of the three, he was the one who seemed quite, it seemed quite important to him to work collaboratively and to build a team. So three good candidates, but I think we're all coming to the same conclusion that as a fit for, for Wenham at this time, it seemed to me that Steve Paulus was the best, our best, our best candidate. And I will say that I think that it's fair to say that that was a general consensus of the input I got as well. So having heard these three sets of comments, maybe we're ready for a motion? Gary and Diane, do you think we're ready for a motion, or do we need to have further discussion?
I think I'm ready. You know, I've heard, as you said, much higher numbers of inputs than we've had on any recent point. So I think also we should say that the inputs were very consistent on the themes and the points of interest that they pointed out in the particular candidates.
Right. So we have a motion, I'm sorry. Sorry. So we have a motion on three choices there, and I think Gary could just fill in the blank if you would.
Yes, do we have the motion up on screen?
Yeah, can we, yeah. Michelle, maybe?
Here we go.
Screen, there it goes. I think it's the very next slide, yeah.
Move that the Wenham Select Board appoints Stephen Paulus to the position of town administrator, subject to background or reference checks and successful contract negotiations.
Second.
We'll take our roll call vote. Gary?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. So unanimous in favor of appointing Steve Paulus as our next town administrator. We have, you know, as always, have to do some reference checks and some background checks, but we'll begin tomorrow, actually, talking about his contract internally, and Tom will help us with that. So congratulations to Steve. I think Tom will be reaching out to all three candidates soon, or this evening, so that everyone knows what our result was. So thanks to everyone. You know, this was a, a different kind of a search, but I think a really strong result. So thanks, and we'll move on to our next agenda item.
Before we go, could we say thank you to Tom, who's really done a lot of legwork on this search?
Yes, oh, thank you for thinking about that. Tom was our consultant, but still is actually, because he's going to continue through the, even past the consultant through the contract negotiation. So you're right, Gary, as usual, in thanking Tom. He's done a great job, and he knows a lot of people, which is very helpful when you're looking for a candidate. We're trying to understand the dynamics of a search. So Tom, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. To the more mundane, I guess, in a sense. The next, the first, next first item on our regular agenda is, as always, public input. We take public input at the beginning of each agenda on any item that is not on the agenda. We, I say ten minutes at the beginning of each meeting. I don't think we've ever reached ten minutes, but we put it in the schedule that way. So if there is anyone who wishes to be heard on an item that's not in the agenda, if you put your name in the chat. We have a few comments in the chat, but I don't, I, there are more comments about our, the choice that we just made than they are public input. So we won't, thank you. We won't call those out. But is there anyone else who wishes to make any comment for item, an item that is not on the agenda? Okay. Next, we have announcements. We have several of those, and Tom, if you get us started, I think Trudy would like to talk about the third announcement that we have, but if you can get us started on the announcements, that would be great.
Certainly.
Thank you.
I'll just do the announcement for the town meeting, and I'll let Trudy do the election and the absentee ballots. First, I'm looking forward to seeing all residents and voters at our annual town meeting at the Buker School on Saturday, April second, at one o'clock in the afternoon. And backup date, if we don't reach a quorum, will be April ninth, also at one o'clock. Looking forward to seeing our voters out there, and I had a enjoyable time at our last town meeting a year ago. Didn't think I'd be back for a second one, but to be there, and I'm looking forward to it. And thank you very much to the board and our moderator and all the department heads and Finance Committee and every other board and committee who have worked on this town meeting. And we're to get to its conclusion on Saturday. Thank you very much.
Now, what do we have? We have a couple of choices. What, what is on our next announcement? Okay, so this is actually about a, a sort of pre, an announcement specifically about this week's COVID test kits. And I think Mary Beth Ting, our public health nurse, is on this call. Mary Beth, are you here?
I am indeed.
Okay. I think this is your announcement, if you're willing to share it with us.
I am happy to share it. Hopefully, everybody can see it, but if there are those who are listening and cannot see it, the announcement reads, "We're preparing for town meeting, and, you know, it's wonderful that we can be meeting together as a town to take care of the town annual business. We will be meeting indoors, which is quite a change from last year. So we're having a number of different households gathering together from the public health lens. It, it's wonderful that we have access to COVID nineteen rapid antigen test kits, which are available to residents, that we, you know, can encourage you to take a test before you come to town meeting. Just be sure that your test is negative. And we also have available KN ninety-fives for anybody that wants them for use at town meeting or any other use that you might have. We have those available as well. A antigen test is not required to attend town meeting. It's a good idea because you're going to be with lots of different people outside your household, but they're not only for town meeting. We have been given these test kits through our regional public health grant, and I shouldn't say given, purchased. They are available for our town residents. So anybody that would like to have a test kit in their home that they need it, I'm happy to help you with that. And if we could move the slide forward a little bit, it reminds you of the time that I'll be there. So I will be at Town Hall tomorrow. That's the one. Thank you. I will be at Town Hall tomorrow, trying to get the after-work crowd between five thirty and seven. Town Hall is closed at that time, but I'll be right in the foyer. All you need to do is just drive right on up, and I'll come out and provide you with the tests and masks if you desire. Friday will be in the later afternoon, three thirty to five, again at Town Hall. And Jim Reynolds, our Council of Aging Director, is wonderfully going to be at the COA on the morning of Town Meeting, Saturday, the second, from nine to eleven. And the COA is just connected to, shares the parking lot of the Buker School. If you have any questions at all, my contact information is mting@wenhamma.gov, or my public health phone number is five zero eight five two seven four five six four. And anybody at Town Hall can, can reach me. If you don't remember that number, you can call Town Hall, and they can patch you through to me, so I can answer any questions that you might have. So thank you very much, and I look forward to seeing everybody at Town Meeting on Saturday afternoon.
Great. Thanks, thanks, Mary Beth. Thank you for sitting there and helping to distribute kits and masks. We'll talk a little bit more about masks at the meeting, and also thanks to Jim Reynolds. And thanks to the Public Health Collaborative that has allowed us to actually purchase these and have them for our residents. So the next two announcements are actually election-related. So Trudy, if you wouldn't mind.
Hi, thank you. Good evening. I wanted to piggyback on Mary Beth's for just a minute. Michelle got all that information on the website today, so it's under the new section of the first page of the website. And we were also able to get it posted to several Facebook Facebook pages. So that information's also out there regarding the test and mask. I just wanted to add that little piece, so that anybody missed this information is out there as well. So as Tom mentioned, the annual election is April seventh. It's going to be at Wenham Town Hall from seven AM to eight PM. Absentee ballots are now available. If you qualify for an absentee ballot, you either have to be out of the area during the polling hours, medical reason or a religious reason, we will not be having early voting, or vote by mail, so it's only absentee. Is there a slide on this one, Michelle? Whoever's thinking. So the last day to apply by mail, to mailing your application for an absentee ballot is this Friday. It's four days before the election. So if you're going to apply for an absentee ballot and you're mailing me the application, I need to have it by Friday. Then chances are the ballots won't be mailed out till Friday afternoon or Monday morning. So the quicker, the sooner you can get it in, the better you would be in making sure you got your ballot on time. I can also take those applications scanned into my email, and all this information is on the town's website. As always, you can walk in and vote your absentee ballot at the counter. And the deadline to do that is noon time the day before, so it'd be noon time on Monday, that you can walk in, complete your application right there at my counter, and complete your ballot at the same time. Ballots cannot leave the office only by mail, so don't come in thinking that you're going to be able to take the ballot home with yourself. It's either by mail or voting at the counter. So I think that's it. I wanted to say about absentee.
Great. Thank you.
Quick question for Trudy. The last day for in-person absentee voting in the office is twelve o'clock on what day?
Monday. I'm sorry. I'm thinking the election's on Tuesday. Thank you.
Right.
It's Wednesday. Thank you, Diane. I'm used to Tuesday elections. Yeah, it's noon time the day before the election, which would be Wednesday. Thank you.
And thanks to, to Trudy and Michelle in general for getting so much of this information up on our social media and our websites, on our website. So that's a good source of information, and thank you for taking the time to put that up there.
Thank you.
So that's our announcements. Moving along on the agenda, we have next our reports. And the first, as always, Tom, town administrators update.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. A few items here. Number one are financial. Good news for Wenham as well as the other three hundred and fifty cities and towns in Massachusetts. The Senate this week just approved the supplemental budget and state supplemental state budget, not the overall state budget. And in it, there is funding, a version of, a different version that was originally filed for one-time roadway funds for our communities. And it appears that Wenham's share would be seventy-five thousand dollars. On it, it's based on a formula, I believe the formula is going to be very similar to the chapter ninety formula. Once the House and the Senate can go through a conference committee and agree on their changes, it will go to the governor for signature, which will mean that Mr. Souza in our community will have additional seventy-five thousand that we did not count on for road repair, maintenance, work with striping or anything else that we need to do potholes on our roads. So looking forward to that, and I'm sure Mr. Paulus will be working with our Public Works Department and our Finance Department on the distribution of those funds when they become available. Next, as we're speaking about potholes, as we move into it, just an update for those who may be hearing is that, oh, how much money have we spent in our snow budget this year? Have we gone over budget? Are we going to need a transfer? Well, the good news is, as of this date, we're in fine shape. And if you're looking out my window here, we're in even better shape. I don't see any snow on the horizon. But we have expended through this date a little less than seventy-four thousand dollars, and we funded a hundred and six thousand. So hopefully, crossing our fingers as we move into April, that there's no surprises. We will be in good shape for our snow budget for FY twenty-two. Next, on the list, as we're looking at good weather, the board asked for an update on our beach stickers from last year down at Pleasant Pond. We did have a drop-off in FY twenty-two from FY twenty-one. In FY twenty-one, we sold a hundred and thirty stickers. FY twenty-two, which was basically just Wenham residents, we sold forty-six. And that was at the twenty-five dollar fee. We did order off stickers for this upcoming year. We're going to try to really publicize it because the weather's getting good. It's a nice beach to go for family or for anyone else who wants to spend the time there during the summer. But our numbers did drop, but we're going to try to make a serious effort of getting those back up again for our community. Next, while we're speaking of parks, I forwarded to our Land Use Department is that there are some new federal programs that we may be eligible for for grant funding specifically for the West Wenham Park Program. Because we received some notices of that the past two days, and those are the type of programs that these grants are looking for. Or programs for livable communities that are looking for not necessarily active parks like ball fields or such, like that, but for parks that can cover multiple, multiple aspects of recreation, walking, trail work, exercise programs along the trails. So I forwarded it on to our Land Use Department to see if we could be eligible for that. And as we keep saying, you never know unless you apply. So hopefully, there'll be something there that Mr. Paulus and the board can be working with over the next few months. And last, but good news, our master plan proposals came out on the rebid. The planning department will be looking at those, but we received three proposals, which is tripled than what we received last time, which is good news. The three companies are Weston Sampson, JM Goldson, and Michael Gallison Associates. So they will be reviewing that in the upcoming weeks, and we can be hopefully going forward with the master plan, which is something which our community is looking forward to, is setting what Wenham will be looking forward, looking forward in the next twenty, thirty, forty years. So thank you very much. And Madam Chair, we did get a comment about somebody who wanted to come in on public input. They thought the meeting was at seven fifteen. Totally up to you.
Well, since we saved a little time and didn't, I don't like to usually do this in the middle of a meeting, but we did save a little time in our appointment, so do we know, as I said, as usual, I don't have these names. Also, Carrie Jelsma just wants to make, I guess, a public comment. So if that's true, go, go right ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, sorry. I thought public comment was at seven fifteen. I guess you all were more efficient than planned. I'd like, Carrie Jelsma, thirty-five Hilltop Drive. I'd like to respond to the more than a dozen residents who raised concerns about, one, the integrity of Wenham elections, and, two, a citizen's right to engage civically as an election worker. These concerns are based on inaccurate claims about my role in nonprofit and creating connections where none exist to my appointment as an election worker. These claims include inaccurate information about how our elections work and a citizen's right to engage civically in a participatory democracy. It's unclear if the inaccurate claims come from basic lack of understanding, getting caught up in a narrative without checking facts, having an intent to misinform or other reasons. basic lack of understanding, getting caught up in a narrative without checking facts, having an intent to misinform or other reasons. Regardless, questioning our election integrity and a citizen's right to serve is concerning. In response to these claims, thank you to the select board and town clerk for affirming the integrity of our elections and all citizens' democratic right to serve our town. Dispelling concerns about our elections strengthens a democratic system we've created to work out our differing ideas and opinions, then come together to create a community until the next election and so on. Appointing me as an election worker and encouraging everyone, regardless of their memberships or affiliations, to volunteer, run for office, vote in our upcoming election or engage civically in Wyndham and other ways supports a participatory democracy. The more people who help our town run means we create a town that better serves us all. The more people who vote in our elections, the less opportunity there is to question election results. Regarding false claims about the Hamilton Wyndham Human Rights Coalition where I'm an officer, the Massachusetts Office of Campaign and Political Finance, or OCPF, affirms the coalition operates legally and is not a PAC. This information is public as are most government policies, decisions, and communications, which demonstrates another basic democratic principle, transparency in government. Town council stated there are no concerns related to these claims about how our town serves us and how we serve our town. Given the public nature of these and other inaccurate claims, including to OCPF, please include my statement in the minutes. With rights also come responsibilities, and I've tried to responsibly exercise my free speech rights with this statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Certainly those will be recorded. They'll be on the record.
Thanks.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is a chair's report. I think I've talked, seems like I've been talking a lot in these meetings. I have, I have no new chair's report for this week. Maybe next week. So we'll move right on to select board members' report. Diane or Gary, do you have anything that you'd like to report in particular?
I do not.
Just if I could have one question on the, I think from last meeting. Have we prepared the response for the MBTA comments due on Thursday? And are they going out under a Tom signature or the planning signature?
I, we have all, I think, seen those. And I do believe Tom is planning to send that out so that we do have a response.
Sounds good.
I thought that was, was well written. I felt as if Margaret really put a lot of information in a well-organized letter.
Yeah, she's very good at that. So thank you to Margaret.
Excuse me, Catherine.
Yes.
Wanted to let the, the board know that that was sent to the state through the submittal process for comments to the MBTA community's guidelines. I did send today because the deadlines, the, their Thursday. I wanted to get it off today before I left the office, so.
Thank you so much for doing that.
Yeah.
We had a good conversation about it. And I think you captured, you know, a lot of concerns that certainly would affect towns like ours. So I hope they, I hope the legislature takes them seriously.
I do too.
Okay, anything else from the select board? Okay, we'll move on. So just one comment. The next item is our consent agenda, which isn't typical item. I just, in case people are wondering why there are so many minutes on here, I've tried, very late in the game, have tried to do the job of every chair, and that is to sort of clear the deck of executive session minutes that may have been approved or not, but for which the subject is no longer an executive or a subject of an executive session. So with the help of Michelle, she, we went through all of the executive session minutes and I reviewed them and everything that has been resolved and no longer private. Not everything. We'll have more next week, but we're trying to catch up. And so most of the executives, especially the executive sessions that we see here that are release only are ones that have been approved and held and no longer need to be held. So just by way of explanation, and I'll turn it over to Diane for the motion.
So is, are we voting it all at once? Or are we all, are we doing this in separate motions?
Maybe. I think maybe separate motions would make most, the most sense for the minutes. And they're written as separate motions. They're just all together.
All right, I move to approve the Wyndham Select Board meeting open session minutes for March 15th, 2022.
Second.
Okay, all those and, well, no, actually you can, no, I'm sorry.
Go through the whole thing.
Go through the thing. This is a consent agenda. So you can make all the motions. And unless there's something we want to pull out, we'll just make them, we'll just vote at the very end.
If I could make one question.
Mm-hmm.
The 525, 2021 and the 61, 2021 relate to contract negotiations of a previous town administrator. As we're going into another set of those, do we want to release those or wait until we actually have a new contract in hand?
That's a good point, Gary. I have no issue with, we'll have to release them. Actually, his contract, that contract is public. We could, we will be, we will be releasing executive session minutes for the next couple of weeks. So if we would prefer to wait a week or so to do those to, if you'd like to pull them out, I guess it does require a motion to pull those out of the list, but we, if you want to make that motion, we can.
It was not a request. It was just a posing a question. If the others are comfortable with doing them all, fine.
What do you think, Diane?
I'm fine with doing them all.
Yeah, I think since there's some strategy there, which may or may not be different than it is now, but the final result of those contracts of the previous TA's contract is public. So I, I think, I guess I'd have to agree with Diane. Let's just.
All right, that's cool.
Release them. Okay.
And we'll start again. I move to approve the Wyndham Select Board meeting open session minutes for March 15th, 2022. I also moved to approve and release the executive session minutes for March 27th, 2020, April 27th, 2021, and May 19th, 2021. Oh, my gosh. May 25th, 2021, June 1st, 2021, June 8th, 2021. And lastly, move to release the executive session minutes for April 21st, 2020, September 8th, 2020, September 22nd, 2020, and October 27th, 2020.
Second.
Okay, we'll take a vote. Diane?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. So again, we'll see, we will see more executive session minutes next. I'd like to be able to. The next chair, who's probably sitting on this call, is going to have to look back a few years because it seems as if we'll clear, clean up the last year or so. But we have, seems like we have an executive session minutes that from a couple of years ago that, that have just been overlooked. Okay, so thank you for that. All under all business, which is next on our agenda. The first thing is annual town meeting update. And we put this on the agenda before the warrant hearing just to give us an opportunity if anyone has anything they want to talk about or questions that came up that should be answered as a result of the warrant hearing that was held last night. I, I opened it up for any kind of comment or discussion.
Diane, you want to go first?
Well, I think we should probably review our board position or how we want to present article. My article, so exciting. Article 14. But I'm not sure if there was anything else we needed to brief on first. I thought it was a very well-run warrant hearing.
Okay.
Yes, I think it was very informative for the audience and actually full of good news this year financially. As to Diane's article 14, if we can coax Diane into it, I think the moderator would be receptive to a planned presentation where Diane describes the course of the history of the three to five committee up to date. Then we would hear from the majority position, hear from the minority position, and then Diane would follow up with sort of the road ahead, explaining where the options are, what the sequence will be going forward.
So I'm wondering if our, I believe our moderator is on this, at this meeting, Roger.
Good evening, Catherine.
Okay, so does what Gary just described coincide or with what your.
So given that this is a select board article, if that is the wish of the select board that the presentation on process be made by a member of the select board rather than the subcommittee chair, then that's something that I would be respectful and allow. So if that's the, the will of this board, given that it's your article, then that's fine. I think the most important thing in terms of the presentation is that the process be described accurately and then the majority and minority portions of the subcommittee each be given their opportunity to explain to town meeting why they made those recommendations. And I think what Gary has proposed achieves that to the same degree that having the chair of the subcommittee explain the process of how the report was prepared would do.
So I have a question about that because processes use, could be used in a couple of different ways here. So we have in that warrant article, the warrant, the actual sort of legislation that we might propose or is being put before the town meeting. And there is a report that was generated by the town government study committee. And then there, and then sort of separate from that, there is a process for if that report or that recommendation of that report is accepted, a process for implementation of the items in that report. So when Gary, Roger, when you're talking about having Diane discuss or present the process, are you talking about presenting the contents of the report that was done by the town government study group? Or the process of implementation, just to be perfectly clear?
Catherine, from the moderator's perspective, it's, it's not my position to dictate what is in a presentation. So long as the presentation is on the article in question and is informative, then that's, who gives the presentation ultimately is up for the proponent of the article to, to make. And here that's the select board. Of course, once the floor is open for debate, we'll recognize any registered voter who wants to speak on an article. As is the typical way of things. But it's up to the three of you to decide ultimately how the presentation of this article and your motion is made at the town meeting.
So I guess that's really just as much a question, a clarification question for Gary. Well, I, I need to understand what you're proposing when you say the process. What, what exactly are you imagining that Diane or thinking that Diane will be presenting? Cause there's two kind of process.
Well, I think the, what I would see the select board present to a town meeting is a recount of the process, starting from the original petitioner up through appointment of the town study committee, the the process followed through to provide that report back to the select board, which is now up on the town website. And then at that point, having described the process to town meeting day, that we have the town government study committee, the representative from the majority and the representative from minority to make or put their case to the assembly. And then that, once that is done, then Diane would close it out with a short presentation, as we've seen, I think later on the slide that says, you know, if this happens at this town meeting, then the following processes will happen as far as going to legislature, come back for the acceptance vote, and then on to the election itself of newer candidates.
So my further question, I guess I don't have an, have an opinion, obviously, but so my reading, in my reading of the report, there's a fair amount of process in there that included, you know, data gathering and sort of the, just the factual results of data in addition to the, you know, sort of opinions, majority and minority. So are you imagining that, I think it'd be, I think it might be a little unfair to ask Diane to give that level of depth. But are you imagining then that after the presentation, if people had questions about the actual content of the report, which no one will have spoken of, that they would then ask the committee? Those questions, I, I don't, I'm not sure how, I felt this way a little bit about the citizens petition that they're hearing too. Like, I'm not sure, based on what you just said, if the, if the town meeting, assembly will actually understand how the majority and minority positions came to that point.
I think that would be part of the responsibility of the majority and minority to explain how they came to their decisions. I would see Diane or the select board representatives' role as to just recounting what the process has been up to town meeting. And then let the majority and minority put forward their cases. And then Diane would wrap up the presentation with a, as I said, the, the road ahead, basically explaining what the next steps would be depending on where the votes fall.
Okay, so I guess we should, since we're talking about Diane like she's not here. I guess that's a, if we decide to go this route, that's a big ask of Diane. How do you feel about that?
I actually have, I think it's a better way to go. I think it's a nice way to start this article. It is a select board article. I would see us or myself giving a brief introduction that in, I have to go back now historically, in so-and-so year, we had a citizens petition come to town meeting. At that town meeting, the article did not pass and the board of selectmen were asked to form a committee to study this. That's the part I would see, but I don't think I would go into what exactly the, the three to five government study committee actually did. So I could do everything up to how we got there. And then the committee would come in, whether that would be the chair or the majority minority that I think we still might need the chair or whoever would like to speak on how the committee did their work. Because I assume the majority and the minority people were just going to speak about their recommendation. So a merger.
Yeah, I think that to have it introduced, since it didn't start, you know, this whole process did start a while ago to have the background described by.
So it's more like giving the background.
Right.
As an introduction and then handing it off to a couple of people and then rounding it up with, okay, so if it passes, this is what happens. How, is that kind of what you were getting us to do, Gary? Or did I go off course?
Yes, I think so that, but I think you know, the process would be four steps. Your telling of the story from the beginning up to town meeting. And then the majority will make their case, the minority will make their case, and then you would wrap it up with the path ahead.
So you're skipping that piece with, with someone tells the, I mean, I guess I could also say what the, a general idea of what the committee did do, how they got together and they did. Well, I don't really know that, even if I read the report.
My concern is if we start to go into the internal processes of the committee, then, you know, where do you cut off the line on the detail? And I think it'll go back to majority minority question. And I think it'll go back to majority minority questioning what's to be included in that. And that at this late date, I believe that the majority and minority out of their last meeting already were preparing those cases. And I see us basically introducing the subject, reviewing it up to the current date of the town meeting. And then let the, you know, the two cases go forward. And then you can explain, which will take some explain to do what happens going forward.
So I think we have three slightly different perspectives. I agree, but I I can't, I I don't think as in any issue, whether it be the any article, school budget or anything else, that we can expect that the people who are sitting in the chairs at town meeting have a full understanding of the research or the report that was done to generate a majority and a minority opinion. So leaving that out to me doesn't really give the town meeting assembly a fair idea of of how to vote. So I haven't heard the majority and minority reports, but I'm imagining that they're fairly brief. And since it's a report that's already written, I'm not, I guess I am personally not concerned that it's gonna devolve into some something, you know, disorderly, but I would like to hear what they did, what the group, not the week by week, but what 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 that report contains. And.
So adding adding another person, adding a another presenter to present what what the board, what that committee did in a short, again, under three minutes, I think is a is a good amount of time, right?
That's seems to be what what our, you know, presentations vary between three and five, so that timing is up to the moderator. It does seem like a lot of reports, but it does make sense because there are, you know, several steps to this particular article in terms of, you know, time. So I think that's a probably a fair, you know, a fair process to at least give the so the people who are giving the minority and majority reports would be members of the committee. But the person who explains what was done to get to those reports. And I think it was a lot of work and I'm sure some of it was contentious and some of it wasn't, but it was consolidated into a report that I just don't think everyone will read and everyone deserves to have a summary of. And it should be done by the people who did the work.
So Diane, you ready to take on the the front and the final?
I will work on doing a little bit of research, remembering the dates and so to get that little bit of an introduction and background. Be prepared to hand that off and then and then go on from there.
Right.
I think some of that information might actually be in the report to help you. I have to go back and look at it, but there might be some background in the report that you can draw from. It also saves, it allows the the next presenter to have a shorter. Okay, there was another question relative to the to that particular article that I wanted to make sure that we brought up tonight. We'll be seeing town council before the meeting, but I believe, and I think we were fairly confident of this answer, but it got asked a couple of times. In our discussion of the process, we talked about a next election and someone asked whether or not that if that can be a regular election or if it could be a special election. We all seem clear that it needs to be done at a town election. But we do have, as I know, we do have some special elections. So that's the only question I can think of that we said we would confirm from a selectman's point of view, a select board point of view, that we said we would confirm with council so that we could be, you know, absolutely sure that we.
I did, I did just get a text back from town council and she said, we can add the authority for a special election, which means I think as written right now, it does mean the annual election, but we can add special election to it, to the motion. But what we had was the the annual.
So I being this process person now have this process question, which I think is one for the moderator. That sounds like an amendment to the motion, Mr. Moderator. I presume you're allowing amendments, but we would have to see if that was, in your opinion, within the scope. What do they say? Four corners of that article?
So Catherine, on that point, first of all, the the select board as the proponent of the article is free to craft its motion. How it sees fit within the four corners of the article.
Okay.
So this is, and I mentioned this last night, the Warren hearing, the article and the motion are two separate things. The article is there to warn the voters in town of what business may be conducted. And the motion is the actual act by which the town proposes to take action.
Okay.
So.
So.
I I hope that answers the first part of of your question as to whether something like that could at least from a procedure standpoint be in motion. In terms of the scope question, yes, believe inserting whether in the original main motion or through a motion to amend, a clarification that the election called for in the special legislation could be either a special or annual town election would be within the four corners of the article after votes.
So then I think that we need to agree that that is what we're imagining or what we're proposing. And probably at this meeting, at least because we're speaking as a board and we'd be making a potential amendment as a board. I'd sort of like to hear everyone's opinion, but then I think we should probably have a motion if we if we intend to amend our motion on town meeting floor, I think it's important that the town knows that we're have a majority, at least in favor of doing that, making that change.
And Catherine, if I if I may, just add one more thing on that point.
Sure.
As the party offering the original motion, that party can move to modify their own motions along with still within the scope without any debate or need for a vote under town meeting time. So it wouldn't even technically be in motion to amend if you were to, for example, if Diane were to put forward the motion as drafted and then say, for these reasons, we are changing, the select board has decided to tweak this. And therefore I'm modifying the the motion in the following way. That would technically modification by the original movement, which is permissible up until the time that debate commences.
Okay, does that make sense that everyone understands? I think I get that, but I think.
I don't, I don't think it needs to be amended when I'm reading it again. And I think we'll have to make sure when we talk to town council, she reads it, it says, this act shall be submitted to the voters at the town of the town at the next town election. So I think that's why we use that wording in the first place, because it's a town election and it doesn't state annual or special. It's the next one. So I don't think that would even need to be changed.
So to cover all bases, since we're a few days away, if we actually specifically ask this question of town council and she she or he, I think it'll be a she, opines that if we intend to include special elections, we need to you need to modify the motion to say special and regular town elections. So just for completeness, I think we should have a sense of this board. If we had to do that in order to make that have an effect, do we agree that that is what we intend for this particular action? Do we do we intend as a board for this to be the next election? And meaning the next town election, whether it be a regular or a special, is that the intent of our of that, I believe.
That was my intention, yes.
Gary?
Yes, I think, and we're speaking of the acceptance vote, which would be the next event after the legislature passes the act back to us. So I think go to town council and see if the next election needs to be specified as next special or town election. That would be, I think that works well.
And if it needs to specify that, what we have is a consensus of the board now and we can confirm it Saturday morning. But the consensus to put that into the motion when you make the motion as a not an amendment, but a sorry, Roger. Lost my town meeting time. What do you? Modification. So just to insert that, explain it and insert it as a modification. So we've agreed that if we need to do that, we're okay with doing that in order to have the effect that we were intending to have.
Yes, I think if town council says that's better wording than on the acceptance vote, whether it's the next election or the next special or town election really has the same effect. So.
Okay. Okay. Or is there anything else at the warrant hearing that, I mean, I'm assuming that the finance people, if there are any issues that they have, that they're bringing those up separately, but relative to the meeting in general or that came up at the warrant hearing or any of our motions that the select board are speaking to? Is there anything else that we wanted to talk about from that we got from the warrant hearing?
I saw that the official reply from the planning board as to the citizens petition was delivered and how are we, how are we going to get that out to the assembly?
I'm hoping they sent Roger a copy of it.
They did. I've approved it as a handout.
All right, sounds good.
So they, I believe, I believe Margaret will be taking care of the printing and delivering to town hall for Friday along with the other handouts that have been submitted to me and approved. They they should all be coming into town hall on Friday so that they're with the materials that need to go over on Saturday morning.
Great. Roger, may I ask, how many handouts do you think that we're going to have?
As of right now, I have approved two. One is the school committee and one is the planning board. I'm aware that later tonight, the three of you will be discussing whether to have a handout as well. The town government study committee is also discussing whether to submit a handout to submit to me. And this is one point where I will note that as a member of that subcommittee, I will recuse myself from that discussion in that committee as that request would come to me as the moderator. If I may, one question, Catherine may ask. It just was not clear to me based on the discussion the three wrapped up a few minutes ago. Will Diane be handing off to the subcommittee chair or not? I just need to know in terms of preparing my list of who is speaking when.
It sounded like that it's a true statement. I'm not sure. I think that I don't know if the committee has chosen a spokesperson for them, but it's usually the chair. So I think it's Diane, chair of the subcommittee. Back to Diane.
No, the majority minority that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, gosh. Yes, right.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
I mean, it's a lot for that article. I understand, but it's a big thing. It's it's a, it's a big article. It entails a lot. And so I think, you know, spending some time on it is important.
I think so too. And I always think that the voters make the best decisions of informed ones. So I don't think we can hurt to give them too.
And I will be, I will be limiting the the majority and minority presentation to the three minutes. So those are advocacy statements rather than informative. Those will be subject to the three on that, the three minute limitation. I think there had been a question about that earlier, so I did just want to clarify.
Okay. Anything else on the warrant hearing? If not, we'll move on. So the next slide has to do with, it's called, it's sort of listed as facility plans. I I I would wanted to share some information, I guess a lot of information that we've put together as was very aptly named last night, we formed an ad hoc annual town meeting preparation group to try to make sure that we remembered everything and and had got everything done. So before I go through this list, which I think we'll have some information that'll be interesting to the public, I would like to thank the members of the committee. There were six, seven or eight of us, Chief Anapoli, Chief Kavanaugh, Trudy Reed, Rogers Marriage, Michelle McGovern, Mike Hardy, Jim Purdy, Rich Souza, Tom Younger. Friday mornings, spending an hour sitting around trying to make sure that we had everything covered. So thank you very much for those folks who just volunteer their time. And in many cases, we'll continue by helping out at town meeting. I feel like we'll see a few of them, including myself, putting handouts on chairs because that's the kind of town meeting we run. So thanks to folks. So this is this is what what we're talking about. This is where we are getting in the week of town meeting. So we made some assumptions because a big issue was what chairs, where spacing, masks, there are a lot of COVID mitigation kind of questions, it being a bit of a transition time and our first meeting indoors. So we made an assumption, our our quorum is 120. We made an assumption that we would have approximately 220 attendees, although we do have some flexibility. We thought it would be the most comfortable and accepting inviting to folks to actually have discreet sections of the space. And I'll tell you in a second what that means to accommodate different levels of COVID mitigation. So what I mean by that, and I think this was touched on last night, is that the gym will be set up with spacing, with three foot spacing, sort of like a one, two, one, two chair spacing. And it, but it will be mask optional in the gym. Masks have, you know, always encouraged, masks will be handed out to anyone who would like one at the town meeting. But if you're sitting in the gym, you will be distanced, but masks will be optional. The multipurpose room, however, which I think most people think of as the one where we have town meeting lunch normally, but we will not be having a town meeting lunch this year, that room is being set up for a mask only room for, and it will be more, the chairs will be more distant, so six feet. Assuming that there are going to be some people who are still not completely comfortable being indoors with 100 or up to 220 other people and they would like some separation. So we're trying to accommodate everyone's concerns. So there will be a separate room for folks. There again will be some flexibility in the chair setup, but there's a lot of space in that room. Roger has made sure that there is an assistant moderator who will be stationed in the multipurpose room. And this is said somewhere else, I think, but everything will be accessible. So we will have monitors and speak and microphones so that the two rooms for the people in the multipurpose room can see and hear everything that's happening in the other room. And if there have to, has to be some coordination of votes, there's an assistant moderator in in that room. And Roger can speak to this more if he wants, but he has the authority to name an assistant moderator. In addition, there will be six residents and this is pretty typical, but on the floor to act as floor tellers if needed, including again, two, two people for the multipurpose room. So again, the the tables, the podiums, the microphones, for those of us who have been at the Bukee for town meeting will be set up as we have always done them, tables in the front, podiums, enough microphones for speakers, et cetera. The gym, as I set up, has staggered, as I mentioned, has staggered chairs, so it's two, one, two, one. And they're imagined to be a three foot separation. And as I said, the multipurpose room is all staggered, six feet apart chairs and masks will be required for anyone who's sitting in that room. Someone asked last night if the windows would be open and the answer was yes. I think Roger said unless there's a driving horizontal rain, which I'm hoping not, we will try to have as much ventilation. Yes. Did you want to say something, Roger, or did you disagree?
Just fingers crossed, no driving.
Right. Not predicted, but you know, we're trying to keep the ventilation. That's, those are good rooms for for ventilation, I think. I mentioned that there'll be audio visual available in both rooms. An addition to what we have seen in the past is we're planning to have video monitors Um, in addition to what we have seen in the past, as we're, uh, planning to have video monitors. Positioned halfway back in the gym in addition to the monitor or the screen that's on the stage, um, because. It's really hard to see the screen on the stage and the, these monitors, we think will help a lot with people having visibility. Um, COVID considerations, masks available to everyone. They're optional in the gym, but will be required in the multipurpose room. Um, hand sanitizer is going to made of it available. Our fire department's going to help us make sure that they have hand sanitizer in multiple locations. Um, and again, multipurpose room designated for residents who want to be masked and segregated from unmasked attendees. Check in will occur in the lobby starting at noon as always. Um, voter cards will be used. So you'll be getting a voter card when you check in. Um, this is sort of, this babysitting information is fairly new and I. Uh, it is on our website, but the, um. High school. National Honor Society is offering babysitting. Um. It's going to be at the middle school, uh, physically at the middle school because they felt that that was, there was more space for that. Um, and, and they're asking that people sign up. Um, so there's a deadline of. April first at noon to sign up. So they have enough, uh, staffing. Um. This is again, some of this is repeated information. Moderator is going to approve any handouts. We just said that we'll place them on chairs. Moderators asked that no food will be allowed in any meeting areas. Uh, but if, um, you know, water or drinks are okay. And we will have police detail officers as well as fire personnel as we always do onsite. So that's the summary. Questions, concerns? I think we also before, uh, actually before we get into that. I think Dr. Ting. May be here? I'm sure the timing, oh, thank you. Our timing is so different than I imagined that I was hoping you'd be here. So I, I, I asked, um. Our, the Chair of our, of our, um, Health Department, Board of Health, Dr. Ting to, um, take, to listen to this presentation with us. Um, to help us answer any questions, but mostly to opine a bit on based on his expertise, if this seems like. Um, a reasonable setup and if there's anything else that he, he on behalf of the Board of Health would recommend. So Dr. Ting, if you. Would do that, then we'll take some questions.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Catherine. And, uh, listening to what you, the committee has come up with, I applaud you guys because. Um, you have no, you had no idea where we would be come town meeting. Um, fortunately, Wyndham is doing very well. If you look at the, um. The town website and go to the COVID nineteen, uh, page, you'll see that in the last fourteen days. Our percent positivity rate is under one percent. It's actually zero point seven nine percent. And we've been about one roughly on average, one percent for the last month. Uh, which is, um, compared to where we were in January, where we had that peak. Um, this is very good news. So again, um, and at least the data suggests for the next couple of weeks. Um, the number of new cases will probably e- either stay the same where we are now or less. Um, so I think given that you, uh, have the option of wearing a mask. You have an option of wearing a mask and being in a separate room where there are only masked attendees. Or you could be masked in the, um, the, um, the gymnasium. Uh, hand sanitizers obviously are going to be very helpful and then the spacing. So I think everything you could do. Uh, is included in this plan. So I, I think it looks great. Um. And I think we're just gonna have a wonderful annual town meeting and. Um, and I think it should, should do well.
Great. Thank, thank you for that. Um, so if the board has any questions about this plan or for Dr. Ting, uh, please. Now's the time.
Just one clarification for the, uh, multipurpose room. Will there be a, uh. Microphone there for people to, uh, speak or will. Separately from the usual two in the center aisle?
Um, I believe I recall that we are going to ask, well, actually, you know what, Roger, you, your memory is probably better. Um. What do you recall on this?
Happy to take that one, Catherine. So, uh, there will not be a speaker's microphone in the multipurpose room, Gary. Uh, the main reason for that is because there's only one camera. Uh, set up for the, uh, video feed and that will be in the gymnasium. So we will ask anyone who's in the multipurpose room that wants to speak to come into the gymnasium. Obviously they're free to keep their mask on. We understand that this may be a slight inconvenience, but. Given that they will only be in the gymnasium for a short amount of time as they make their comments and then are free to return to the multipurpose room. Uh, this was the, the best we could do under the circumstances.
Okay, so. Other. Questions or comments for? Dr. Tang or? The committee? If not.
Do we, uh, reiterate, uh? Perhaps we should, uh, if it's not here, when, uh, people can start checking in?
Yeah, I think check in will occur in the lobby as it says, starting at noon. Um, I think we would encourage people not to come too much earlier than noon, but also not to come at the very last minute. We'd like to avoid. You know, uh, a jam up or a crowd of people in the lobby. Um, I, at one point we mentioned also that, that. We're not, uh, the moderator is not allowing, um, some of what we would usually have fundraising events. Plans, et cetera, we're not going to have those, uh, available in the lobby this year. Uh, outdoors is fine, but again, we're trying to keep the. Open space. So check in i- in the usual manner, in the usual place. We'll, we'll start at noon for a one o'clock meeting. And I, as I said, I think all of this information is on the. Website. Um, I think, I believe that the sign, um, electronic sign that's outside of the fire station has been kind of cycling through. Announcements about town meeting and, um. And we have this meeting and, uh, I think I'm hoping that folks will. Anyone who has questions should, uh, about what's going to happen or how it's going to happen should, uh, contact, uh, town hall. Uh, and you know, the, then everyone has also received a postcard with all of the general information about the dates and the times. Um, it's always a reminder for everyone to bring their warrant book. We may have a few of them there, but, um, again, to. Bring your own warrant book is the only other thing I can think of. Anything else? Okay, I, I know this was, a- as most things this year, probably a little later than we would be able to report out this information, but. Um, you know, as Dr. Ting said, and thank you very much for being here and also to Mary Beth Thing. Um, we really had no, I, we, we really had no idea what direction we needed to be going in. Uh, even when we started this a number of weeks ago, so, um, it, and some of this information. Just i- is breaking news, but everything that we see here has been confirmed and, and we should be set with. Okay, um, staying on the annual town meeting plan. Um, I think we did the warrant review, but we do have one handout that I think we have in. I think there's a slide of this handout. Um, that I believe Diane and Michelle put together. That is a visual. Or maybe Diane or Tom, someone want to explain this? It's not my slide, so let somebody else explain what it is.
I'll, I'll explain it because that's what the, it's basically what I'll discuss a- after, um. All the reports. So the timeline for the process. Should this pass at town meeting, um, while it actually starts before that town government study recommended to the Board of Selectmen. To increase the board from three to five members. The Board of Selectmen had two options, either to bring it to the voters at a town meeting or not. If they did not, it would have died, but we brought it to town meeting. It became Article fourteen. Article fourteen is now being brought to town meeting. It can get approved or disproved. If it doesn't pass, it just falls apart and nothing happens, but it might pass. Should it pass, then you follow the arrow all the way up to that top right. I have to say, I didn't make this flow chart. I had one of my high school interns do this for me and so nice. Yeah. So if it does pass, the legislation that we agree to here at town meeting will go to the general court where they will approve or disprove. If it gets approved, it'll then come back to town Wyndham for a ballot vote at the next. Town election, which we will finalize with town council before Saturday. If it passes at that ballot vote, it'll then go. To another vote at the next town election after that to vote for. Three more members and thereby thereby making the board. Nope. Will vote for, I can't see the bottom.
Two more members.
Two more members to make the board go from three to five. Yes. So it's just a little bit. Um. But one thing you said yesterday was to bring more time, the time into it and, and that might not be shown here.
Right, someone did ask about that. Um, I don't know how, if you can. Speak to it or somehow get it on the slide, but people did.
So I think the legislation to general court, somewhere in there, we can say that's, you know. Three to nine months. Hopefully it shouldn't be that long. Then the ballot vote would then come, I mean, I could put. Approximate dates in there or. Or just some approximate times. What, what would you like? Cause I have the student intern coming back tomorrow. She can fix it up a little bit.
Well, I don't think you want to clutter up the slide too much, but maybe if you talk to, excuse me, you know, the, uh. The, uh. Article itself will talk about the minimum. Knows what is it thirty-five or sixty-five days to allow the campaign to happen? So maybe that's the number that, uh, you should, uh. Insert in there by speaking.
You mean no more than, no less than thirty-five days after the legislation approves it? Can we have a ballot?
Yes.
Thirty-five days.
Cause I think it's gonna be hard to tie it to particular dates as we really don't know. You know. What the, uh, general court's gonna do time wise.
If, if there's space without cluttering it up, we might, uh, clarify that the. Acceptance balance about acceptance ballot vote by saying at, maybe we can fit in the wording at the next. Town election. Or at next town election, because I think that's what the question was. It wasn't how long does it get through legislation, but. So which, you know. Which town election is that on? Um, and then when, which, which. Uh, election is the ballot vote to, to. Accept the members or to, um.
Okay, so say that again. The time you were talking about was the ballot vote?
So the ballot vote for acceptance, I think, you know, the wording we just. Said was ballot vote. For acceptance at next town election. Cause I think that's the way the wording is.
Okay.
And then valid vote for three to five members. I think we. Had some actual wording that probably says that that.
I think it's the same at the next, yeah, the fall or.
If you can just. Yeah, if you can just put one more word in there, then I think people get a sense of the timing. Um, okay. That's just my thought on that, but the slide looks great. And for. People who are visual learners and not very good listeners like me, this is, this I think will be, um, will be great.
So just another question that was brought up. Last night that I had totally forgotten about. Do we want to bring that into the slide or mention that there was another option that we could have done? Or do we not want to? Put that on the slide because we opted not to do that. Ballot vote and member vote at the same election.
I think that was a good question personally, but we. Had options and we as a board, um, in a majority way decided the options that we wanted to present.
Um, so this is what we're presenting.
This is them. Um, it, the question may come up again, and I think it's reasonable to answer it. Yes, there were options in the way you answered it last night, but. I think that would really get confusing if we started to try to put.
Okay.
All of the possible options. That sound right, Gary?
Yes.
Yes, I think so. You, the slide would have a, a hundred different, uh.
Right. Right.
Um, so then if I make these changes, um, it needs to go to Roger. So if I can make these changes and send them through Tom. To you and. And Roger, will that work out all right? Or do we need to approve this one slide and leave it at that? I don't know who's.
Well, all of those things. We do, if we go back, yeah, if we go back, um, a slide, I think we agreed that we, so there would be clarity. That, um, that we, the board would approve, I guess it's the. Handout as presented with. A few amendments, um, that we would vote to approve it and send it to the moderator for his approval. A- after which it could be distributed at town meeting. That's what the, the motion is.
So we can, I can make those amendments and send them through you, through Tom to you, to Roger. Okay.
Yeah, through Tom to Roger. Yeah.
We are ready for the motion then?
Mm-hmm.
Right, move that the Wyndham Select Board approves the ATM handout describing the implementation process. For Article fourteen, three to five select board members to be sent to the moderator for his approval of distribution at annual town meeting as amended.
Second.
Okay, we'll take a vote, Diane. You can vote for your own handout, Diane. Good, good plan.
Yeah.
Gary?
Yes.
Uh, Catherine, yes. Well, well done, Diane. Thank you for that.
And I have to say that implementation process is the word we were looking for earlier, the difference between the procedure and how we got to where we are. And to the implementation process. That's whoever thought of that word. Great.
Yeah, okay. So that. I think we're set now for, for that, um. For all the town meetings stuff to date. Um, so our next agenda item is truly old business and I, I'll just, um. Introduce it. Um. And. Introduce it. So folks remember, and I don't mean to be excluding you, Tom, but this really started. A little bit before you arrived. Um. We, we had a, I don't know what reading, I guess it was a second reading of some policies, these policies. Um, at a meeting, uh, uh, we might remember and, um. We, there were some amendments that were suggested by the public and by us at that meeting. Um, our last town administrator was presiding over that meeting and he expressed, um, interest. In some help, getting some help making those amendments. Um, and the lucky or unlucky person suggested the changes was invited to help. Um, excuse me, I just lost my. Hearing ability here. Um, and so. In a circuitous way, um. The person who offered to help actually is the author of these, um, articles based on, you know, what we had. And, um, her knowledge of human resources, which is extensive as well as, you know, um, inputs that the public and, um, we had. So. This is a long time coming. Um, we've seen a couple of these policies several times. We've probably been talking about them. At least one of them for over a year. Um, but I. I did invite, um, the author, Deirdre Parati to come this evening because, um, there are. There were, since she ended up really doing this by herself, not with Ryan, honestly, um, um. There were some considerations that I think she was unable to address or, and also some, uh, considerations in writing the article. So. Dieter, if you just take a minute or so, um, just to. Tell us what your considerations were in, in writing these, uh, or finishing these, these amendments. Thank you, by the way. Uh, for doing that. I don't think we would have had articles without, um, some help. Um. That would be great. And then our point, the select board's point tonight is really to just review them and see if there are, uh, uh, questions. Um, I should mention, uh, sorry, Deirdre. I keep remembering things. Um. Tom sent the, the drafts to council some time ago. And just received them back today. So I think they were, thank you, Tom, for that quick turnaround from, on your point, anyway, from your point of view. Um, I think we had them in our hands about ten minutes after, um. Probably he had them. So when we see them, when we get to the actual and, and Deirdre has not even seen these. Council comments, but when we get to them, when we see them on the screen, that they are redlined versions, but. Um, again, thank you, Deirdre. And if you could just give us an intro to how you came about, or not how you came about, but what your considerations were, that might help us. Take it away.
Okay. Thank you, Catherine. I'm happy to be here to talk about these. I, I wanted to just give the board. A little bit of an understanding of what I did. Um, and I'll start just briefly with the code of conduct. Because that's a little bit separate from the others. The code of conduct, when I went back to make some edits to it, because we had talked about it at the, at the hearing in the fall. I realized that whoever had constructed this policy originally had drawn it from a template. That's actually available on the MMA website and it's a template that was created by. The Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association. So I went back to the template. And I thought that there was language in the template that had been dropped. and I thought that there was language in the template that had been dropped in the Wenham version. So I basically put some language back in that I thought was useful and beneficial for the town to have in. So you, if you wanted to see the original template where this came from, it is online and I'd be happy to send you the link. So that's how the code of conduct, that's how I worked on the code of conduct. When we spoke at the public hearing in the fall, the idea was that I was going to take the sexual harassment policy and do some redline comments to it. But when I really started to dig into it, I just realized that that wasn't going to work because there was just too much that really needed to be reconfigured and reconstructed. So as I had talked to you about at the hearing, there were, I, I had looked originally at a, at a whole bunch of policies from different towns. And then when I went back to do the edits and I had mentioned these towns the last time, but I particularly focused on Greenfield, Amherst and Manchester by the Sea. Those are towns where I thought had really good language and I sort of took the best pieces from those towns and combined them into a new policy. So two reasons for doing that, one is that there is a lot of this language, policy language out there in the public domain. So there's really no reason to start from scratch to rewrite it. And also I was hoping to sort of ease the process of the legal review by town council by using language that's already in the public domain, that's already been vetted by legal counsel in a variety of towns. So there's, there's actually not, there's very little language in here that I authored sort of originally. Most of it is taken from here and there and put together to complete a policy. So in the process of doing that, the, where we had started in the fall, the Wenham version included sort of one paragraph at the beginning for the equal employment opportunity and it was sort of squished into the sexual harassment policy. And likewise, there was one paragraph at the end, which was a reasonable accommodation policy, again, sort of squished into the tail end of the sexual harassment. So it sort of didn't do complete justice to all three of those issues. So what I did was take them apart so that each policy could stand alone and be clear on its own. And so that's what you have in front of you from my drafts. As you said, I've not seen the legal council redlined. But there's an equal opportunity, equal employment opportunity policy. Then the policy against sexual harassment and other forms of unlawful harassment. And then finally, the reasonable accommodation, which I will tell you, reasonable accommodation was largely based on Manchester by the Sea. I thought they had a really well-done policy and I added some links on, on the specific legislation. But the bulk of the wording is, is from Manchester. The sexual harassment and unlawful harassment is, like I said, more of a compilation of the three towns. There's one particular section that I didn't feel was appropriate for me to restructure completely, and that's what I want to draw your attention to. And that's specifically the reporting procedure section in the sexual harassment policy. I think as a board, you still need to deliberate particularly on who does the investigation and who makes determinations in sexual harassment claims. And we're a small town, we do not have a human resources office or officer. So that makes it a little more complicated. It's not always appropriate for the town administrator to do these kinds of investigations and determinations. I think possibly it could be town council, but in my opinion, they're not truly an independent third party. So I think there's some thinking to be done in terms of who actually does the investigation and who actually makes the determination of whether it's harassment and what the discipline should be and so forth. It may not always be appropriate for the, for the board to be doing it themselves internally. And there are some different ways that towns have done it. I know Rowley, for one example, has a personnel board that can be called upon for this. That's one option, but that's, you know, creating a whole other board. To me, the simplest is to have some kind of independent third party that you can draw on in the event that something like this happens. But I was hoping that Tom or town council would have more input on that. But I think that's particularly the section that I would say still needs some, some thinking. And I think that's, that's all that I have.
Great, thanks, thanks Deirdre. I, I know that we haven't had these the revised ones very long, but and I don't, I don't think we can expect to take any action on them tonight, but I hope that some of the board at least read, was able to read some of the, of the policies and may have some questions or comments. Not only on what was originally written, but what council has amended. My observation is that council made a fair number of comments, but not too many substantive ones. There were more changes in wording, I guess, to be aligned with their way of saying things. So I guess let's just, if we can, if we have any conversation that we can have, let's start with the policy against sexual harassment and other forms of unlawful harassment, which is, you know, we've seen several times before in, in slightly different forms. Does anyone have any questions or comments or things that they'd like to see discussed further? At another time. Gary?
Do we have the redline version that we can put up for the?
I, I don't, do, do you, I don't know if we have, I think we do. Michelle?
Hi, yeah, one second.
Sure. I will, while, while Michelle's getting that, I will reiterate what Deirdre said hurt. I, I don't, I think the council, when it came to enforcement, so to speak, or, or other things relative to that, didn't really have too many suggestions on how best, who, who should be, what the reporting should look like. So that's going to be, end up being a, a separate conversation, I think. But I don't know how you want to look at this. This, these, these red lines are, you know, just typographical errors. Can we see any more of that page at one time or is this a scrolling thing? Then it gets very small. So we have the redline versions, they will be. So again, if we're just looking at the red lines, this, this particular one under scope relates, specifically calls out what should be done in groups that are governed by a collective bargaining agreement added to this.
I could just jump in. So what we're looking, I, to be honest, I have not had a chance to read through these due to my day, but we haven't read the, besides the red line from the town council, I haven't seen these versions from Deirdre at all, have we?
No.
No.
These were drafts that, you know, have been sitting
Right.
around for a while. They're, from what I can remember, they're pretty, in pretty much in alignment with what we had before, although we did not have a couple of these policies, but we're just, you know, these went from someone's computer to council and then to us. So this is you know, I guess our first reading of this particular, these particular words. And unfortunately, we didn't have a lot of time.
No, I'm sorry. I couldn't get to them. I, you had said they were going to come late and to try to look at them, but I couldn't do that today.
Okay. So we can leave this item for, continue, you continue this item next week. Hope that we can get through as much of them as we can. At the beginning of the year, we were very committed to getting some of these done. And you know, reality sort of intruded. But if it is the will of the board, we have them here now. We're meeting next week. We could at least take a look at them. Maybe we can make some progress on them at our next meeting. If in the meantime, there are some questions, I think specifically, specifically questions that have to do with what council has opined or questions in general, I think it's fair to email them to Tom who can collate them and, you know, possibly get some answers so that when we are actually discussing them, some of the questions that might require research will have already be answered or have some answer. So we'll take these and put them on, on the agenda and see for next week and see how far we can get with them.
Yeah, I'm so sorry. Unless, I don't know if you guys had time to look at them.
No, I think this is, you know, obviously very important material. So I think all three select board members ought to be able to say they're fully prepared coming into this. So let's push it off a week and we can really pick it up and address it.
Okay, we don't have anything else going on this weekend. We should be able to read it.
Right, no problem. Maybe it'll be a rainy weekend. Okay, so let's, so please expect those to show up. These, and please, if you, if you have a moment, take a look at them. If, if the board has no objection, I will send, I think, make sure that Deirdre has the redlined copies so she can understand what council has changed and, and what she's, her drafts. And then, you know, we'll talk about them next week. Okay, important policies. I hope we can at least make some, some further slow. But this was, anyway, it is what it is. Okay, so the, the next old business that we have for our agenda for this week, I, I feel like we've covered this for the short term, but Tom, do you have anything longer term that you want to talk about in the distribution of COVID kits and masks relative to how many or how often or where they're generally going to be distributed?
Generally, at this point, what we see there for distribution for next week, March thirtieth, you will be available from five thirty to seven and Friday, April first from three to the five and April second from nine to eleven, working with Mary Beth and Jim on a long-term program. Going forward, depending upon how many kits we have left in tests. But we will be scheduling something on a long-term basis for the week after April second.
Okay. Okay, so we look forward to hearing more about that and getting that publicly. I, I have a sense that some of these kits that have been around for a little while are going to start to expire. So the sooner we can get them to people that, that can use them and the masks as well, like the, you know, the better. So I, I know that Mary Beth and, and Jim are happy to help with this in any way they can. Any questions in particular? The board wants to make sure, issues that board wants to make sure Tom includes in distribution of test kits or masks?
Think we're good?
Okay, we're good Diane?
Yes.
Okay, guess what folks? I think we have just about made it through another meeting. We have I have no other matters that could have been reasonably anticipated. The dates there are for the, the annual town meeting and election. We do have a meeting next Tuesday, the fifth. So two, five, seven, next week's, that's, that's not on there, but we have some more minutes. We'll have these more information about masks. We can have a town meeting debrief at that point if we need to and the policies. So we do have a few things that we do need to talk about next week. So those are the upcoming meeting dates. Am I forgetting anything?
Executive session tomorrow.
Right. See, I will always forget one. Yes, in order to get started with our planning and with our negotiating, there is an executive session posted for one o'clock tomorrow for the board to advise Tom on parameters that we think would be important for a contractor, a lot of agreement with our new town administrator. So that's also posted and another meeting. And
Are we posting for a meeting on the second?
Yeah, that's what I was just about to say. I was thinking the same thing. Does noon sound like the right time? I, I always feel like we're a little tight, but I don't anticipate that we're going to have any last minute discussion, but that gives us about you know, half an hour to forty-five minutes. I think that FinCon will probably post at the same time. So if there's any last minute corrections or changes, we'll be able to make those. So yeah, and Tom, if you make note of that, we do need to post a, a noon time meeting on town meeting day. It's usually, it's in at Bucker and I don't, it's just whatever. I think it's a conference room. I don't know what they call that, but it's a small conference room near the main office that we generally meet for the boards. Okay, anything else? If not, Diana?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the March twenty ninth select board meeting at eight fifteen PM.
Second.
Okay, all in favor Diane?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. Thank you all very much. Thank everyone else very much and we'll see you shortly. Within a few days. Thanks, everyone.